Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. May I have roll call, please?
Mr. Penaro.
Here.
Ms. Creed.
Here.
Ms. Grosec.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Ms. Tressi.
Here.
I am the president of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last night at our board of policy meeting committee meeting, we had a chance to ensure you remember the detail in our reports. But driving home after having that discussion and listening to the participants that were there, I was thinking, I've been thinking my car and some other places. But I was thinking about that form that we have. I would like to recommend to you and board, I think it's your decision based on what we all heard last night, is that we keep that form out through the presentations, honors, awards that we have at, so that people can fill it out and not have to be here by 5:30 if they can't make it to 10:00 with their meeting. And this way, if they're even sitting in the audience, they've got time, 15, maybe 15, 20 minutes, look at the agenda, fill it out. We keep it there, we have a natural break after the presentations, then we pull up the forms, Mr. Snyder can go grab the forms and bring it and start the public comment. It gives, after hearing what we heard last night and talking about that form, I think that might be a great way to get started with that policy.
Brilliant. I think that's brilliant.
So if we could start it tonight, I'd like to leave it there tonight until we get the break.
Well, based on what we heard last night, the presiding chair has a lot of authority and power to waive certain rules. That's one of which we can waive. And what we're referring to is the public participation form, which is sitting right over here. Typically, what we do is we would collect it by the meeting start time. If someone had comments that they'd like to make about agenda items, what we're gonna, what we are doing if the chair, Ms. Grosec agrees, is we are going to delay collecting those until after we take a brief recess after the presentation component. So, Ms. Grosec, is that your wish?
That is my wish. I think that's wonderful.
And that's what we put as said, so shall we?
Still wish that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that good thinking. Maybe we should make your group look a little longer.
Yeah, it's a short drive. I can't keep my attention there long.
I'd like to go ahead and pass it over to Lander.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Barnes and the board, for joining us here at Lander. We like to host, if you haven't noticed already. And we are so excited that you get to share with us in one of our new special spaces that you guys absolutely supported. We are so grateful for the new furniture and the new spaces, and our kids and staff absolutely love it, so thank you so much. All right, we are gonna start by recognizing three very special students. So I'm gonna start with Emily, if you want to come on up. All right, Emily, I'm gonna read some wonderful things that the teacher said about you, okay? Okay. Emily is enthusiastic, conscientious, and involved. These are all words that describe Emily's desire to learn. She displays respect for her teachers and staff and her peers, always acting as a positive cooperative work partner, and most importantly, is a truly kind person. Emily participates often in class. She contributes her thoughts and insights to class discussions and is not hesitant to ask questions for clarification. She approaches new learning and experiences with a positive attitude. Her enthusiasm and smile are contagious. She puts her best foot forward and takes pride in her work. She is responsible, organized, and stays up to date on assignments. Outside of school, Emily enjoys being outside, playing with her dog, talking with her friends, and horseback riding. Emily has made a positive impact on her teachers and classmates through the years at Lander. We congratulate and recognize Emily as the February 2024 Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month. Congratulations. Got that in it, right?
Not yet.
Okay.
Up here.
Yes. And then principals, if you want to get in there as well. And family.
Our next student is Max. We are honored to celebrate Max, who truly exemplifies the Lander spirit. In the classroom, Max is a shining example of dedication and perseverance. His commitment to academic excellence is truly commendable, and his classmates often looked at him as a source of inspiration. Max not only excels in academics, but also goes out of his way to assist his peers and include all of his classmates in anything he's doing. Max's kindness is infectious, creating a positive ripple effect throughout our school community. His respectful demeanor towards his teachers, classmates, and staff is a testament to the values we strive to instill in every student. Like most fifth grade boys, Max enjoys playing video games, football, and being with his friends. Max is an extraordinary individual who is making a difference at Lander Elementary School. We congratulate and recognize Max as our February 2024 Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month.
Couple more, Max. Got it. Congratulations. We do have one more student to recognize, Bria, if you want to come up. And I apologize, I should have done this earlier, but I am very proud to introduce my administrative intern, Hannah Schmidt, so she will be helping us this evening.
Bria embodies characteristics both in and out of the school setting that capture the true meaning of a role model. At school, Bria is always willing to lend a helping hand or listen in ear while remaining self-sufficient when crafting her own decisions. Bria's kindness and ability to empathize continues to shine through at home, where she enjoys spending time with and helping her family. She sees challenges as learning experiences and willingly continues problem-solving through a task without abandoning her work. Bria brings her positive and selfless energy through continued active participation into things she loves, singing, art, school events, and acts of kindness. Bria spreads joy wherever she goes. We truly value the opportunity to work with her every day at Lander Elementary. We congratulate and recognize Bria Garrett as the February 2024 Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month.
Here's that smile. Family?
She's taking her own picture, so she's good.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Next up, I am honored to celebrate some of very special staff members here at Lander this evening. So we are going to start with Mrs. Patty Jaccom, and I'm gonna give her the choice to stay seated or come up. She's coming up. All right. This was very hard for Mrs. Jaccom, so she's getting a good sport right now. Truth be told, her team came to me in about October and said, "We need to honor Patty. Patty deserves an award. She deserves to be recognized." And I said, "Well, perfect, because Mrs. McConaughey and I were already talking about honoring her at the board meeting." So this is a joint decision from her colleagues and from all of us. So you get to hear the wonderful things people say about you. I'm gonna start with mine, and I had to write it down so I could get through it here. Patty, you are the epitome of a true advocate. Your dedication to our students goes far beyond the realms of traditional teaching. With enthusiasm and genuine care, you champion each individual's potential, fostering an environment where every student feels valued and empowered. You are a tireless advocate for students' well-being, both academically and personally. You listen attentively, offer support without judgment, and go the extra mile to ensure that every student feels seen and heard. Beyond your role as an educator, you are a beacon of compassion and empathy. You are a silent leader that many of your colleagues strive to be. You teach our students the importance of kindness, empathy, and standing up for what's right. In a world that often reflects chaotic and uncertainty, you provide a steady presence, a guiding light for students and colleagues as they navigate the challenges of adolescence and beyond. Your impact is immeasurable, shining a light in the hearts and minds of all who have the privilege of knowing you. Thank you for being a true advocate, not just for education, but for the countless lives you touch every day. So there is just mine. Now I'm gonna tell you how her team feels about her. I also, I was emailing back with Mr. Jaccom, and he doesn't know I'm doing this, but you'll hear a common theme here, and he said, "He's been blessed, in your 39 years of marriage, to have had a front row seat to witness the passion and joy that you bring to the classroom and the lives of so many children and families." And I don't think I could have said it any better. Well, listen, you're doing great. Patty is an extraordinary human being and educator that deserves this heartfelt recognition for her unwavering dedication to positively impacting the lives of hundreds of children. With her kind and caring demeanor, Patty creates a safe and welcoming environment in her small groups, where students feel not only supported, but also empowered to overcome hardships and academic challenges. Going above and beyond every single day, Patty invests countless hours in advocating for kids, always with a calm demeanor and a big joyful smile. Her ability to connect with children on a personal level is a true gift, making them feel so loved. Patty's compassion and genuine love for students shine through in her efforts to help them feel good about themselves. She is a sweet soul who extends her warmth to both students and adults, always making everyone feel important. Patty's professionalism is unmatched, consistently prioritizing what is best for the kids she serves. In every way, Patty exemplifies the qualities of an exceptional educator and a compassionate advocate for every child lucky enough to work with her. Her impact on the Mayfield community is far-reaching and worthy of recognition. Thank you, Patty. I'm done now. Yes. I mean, I could keep going.
Let me get one of these with you.
Oh, boy, now you're pushing it, Lauren.
Okay, and then how about, yeah, you guys come up. Dr. Barnes and board.
Thank you very much.
All right. I just feel like we should just bring everybody up.
Parents, everybody.
Everyone, come on up. Oh, look at the flowers. Bring the flowers. Everybody.
Those are from my team.
Okay, congratulations.
Okay. I know I'm gonna catch flack from my colleagues for this, but the next group of people I would like to recognize are very, very wonderful paraprofessionals. So if you guys could all walk up here, just come on, everybody come up. There are 17 of them. Seventeen. I know we're only supposed to recognize one staff member, but this is certainly a huge piece of our puzzle, so I could not pick one over another. Every year at the opening staff meeting, I always make sure... That's okay. That says it all right there. We always talk about how important paraprofessionals are and what a big piece of the puzzle they are, and I tell them all the time that they are undoubtedly a lifeline to our students. They spend the most time with them throughout the day. They are mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, whatever hat is needed, they put it on and they wear it. So we would like to recognize our team of paraprofessionals for being a lifeline to our students. Our paraprofessionals go above and beyond to build and maintain positive relationships with our students and staff. We are honored to recognize and thank the Lander paraprofessional team for your dedication and commitment to the students and our Lander community. Thank you for all you do. We are gonna play a video to follow up, so this was made by Hannah Schmidt, and it kind of speaks volumes to why you're standing up there.
Turn it off. Turning it off. Okay.
It's about make it say it best.
Hi, Mrs. Lainey. I like, I like when you come to my class sometimes. Also, also, I like when your hopes to meet at my class.
Hello, Mrs. Carrasso. I love you, and I care and support her about you.
Thank you, Mrs. Delphine. You're a great teacher. You charge your homeworks every day, and you check out a library book, so we can bring them home every week.
This job is funny. She's happy because she's really nice to me, and she all helps me with stuff.
Thank you. Best part.
What I like about Mrs. L that I get to see her in the morning and when I walk into school, and then at recess I get to see her, and then I give her a hug.
Hi, Mrs. Sheeran. Funny, nice, and kind.
What I like about Ms. Pollak is she helps us when we need help, and also how when we're struggling, she will always give us support.
Me too. I love Ms. O'Grady is because she's helpful, and she's kind and nice, and whenever somebody needs help, she's there.
Hi, Mrs. Lainey. Are you so nice? You help me.
Hi, Mrs. Harygo. You're best, and you be nice.
Bye.
Hi, Mrs. Halko. I know that you help a lot of people.
Thank you for helping all of my classmates and making sure that everybody gets a good education, and thank you for caring about everybody.
Miss O, help us. Miss O is kind.
You're such a good teacher. You help the kids. You help the kids get better at everything. You're loving, you're supportive, and you help everybody at math,数学，and odd.
Hi, Mrs. Schmidt. So I'm gonna tell you all the things I like about you. You make sure I wash my hands, you make sure I take my brush. You always make sure that if I'm hurt, you'll always put a Band-Aid on me. And you'll take care of other kids too, to make sure they're not hurt, and you call their moms if they're sick. A lot of this, this thing I like about you is that you are really kind and helpful to everyone in this school.
Thank you, everybody, very much. That concludes our presentation. Thank you all for your support. Staff, thank you for being here. It speaks volumes to our school community and the family that we are. So thank you very much. Thank you, board.
So we will get back to the agenda, and community communications is the next piece up. And Mr. Snyder took to the Roxers. Nothing, and no one has touched this before, so we'll move straight on to the president's announcements. I'm gonna lead into the meeting we had last night over some of the board... Bylaws, actually. I was gonna say policies, but I just corrected last night, so. Actually, bylaws, and we really do kind of keep it under the beat. And we have another meeting scheduled, just to get things shored up as to what then we will bring to the board as our recommendations. I don't think I have anything else, so I will pass it to Dr. Barnes.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a pillar discussion prior to the meeting. The topic of our operation, sorry to put you on the spot, but did you have anything that you would like to share with the public since you really carry the role during that conversation?
I felt the conversation was very positive. I felt the questions were really, really good. None of them were quantitative, but I would say the call was very, very good. Just to remind the board, we're still looking at our current finances, and we are still targeting an operating lead, so we're gonna work on that. We quickly got to get that presented to you for consideration in advance of the August placement or deadline to be published after the coming of the election, so that's about it.
And lastly, thank you for that. I'd just like to just mention that I really appreciate intimacy, that is, the coffee talk. It allows for two-way conversations to take place, and it's a good practice.
That leads us to board and committee reports. Before I dive into that, speaking of the pillar conversations, we need to go ahead and sign a subpoena for next month, which will be at Center and the pillar of the smart students. You're available? Are you available? Yep, you did. You did. So we're gonna send you guys. Yeah, it's okay. All right. All right. So I'm trying to better kind of keep track of that. Are there any other committee reports?
Yes, I can hold. Madam President, thank you. As a current board member of the Mayfield Schools Foundation, which as you know is currently transitioning to the Mayfield Alumni Association as our efforts coincide and to streamline the things that we support, Alumni Association will be assuming the function of the foundation. And with that being said, and as a current member of the Mayfield Alumni Association, they will be hosting the annual top golf, swing, and party event. I am currently chairing that again this year. This will be the fourth year for the event. It will be held on Sunday, April 21st, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is always a very fun event comprised of, anyone can come, our community members, our community leaders, friends, alums, families, et cetera. It's always a great time. Registration is currently open online. That information is available on the Mayfield Alumni Association's website, not the foundation's, and you can get that information off of mayfieldalumniassociation.com. Link to register is all sponsorship information. We are also currently seeking donations for raffle prizes and such. I look forward to this event, and really, it's just the camaraderie is second to none, in my opinion. And that is it. Thank you.
And we'll move on to the superintendent's. And we'll move on to Superintendent's sent agenda. R, thank you. Motion to approve.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
That moves us to our classified appointments. Motion to approve. Second. Roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
I'm staying.
Mr. Tressi, or Miss Reed?
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Okay, and that moves us to the College Credit Plus Program Room of Kansas State. Motion to approve.
So move, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar. Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Next, we have the College Credit Plus Program Room at the Yale College. Motion to approve.
Actually, this is how we come up.
Done. I'm sorry. Sorry.
May I ask you to move, I didn't know. You.
So this is kind of what the county.
Have a motion, Mr. Janar. Second. Thank you. Mr. Hess. Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Now we'll go on to the Credit Plus Program Room.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Hess. Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Mayfield High School New Course Substudy for 24-25 academic year. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
That was really incredible. Next, we have the approval of the 24-25 high school course substudy. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
That was actually a course catalog as a verification. I think the title didn't reflect the language, so we did the new course, and then we did the course catalog, just to clarify.
Thank you for that. Next, we have the... Oh, man.
The O C should be next.
Yes. So the annual membership for the Ohio School Boards Association.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
It's okay.
It is. I never thought I'd hear you say that. Next is the Excel Tax Student E Correction. Motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Moving into the Treasurers' Report, we have the financial statements for January 31st, 2024. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Next, my favorite, donations. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
And financial transactions. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Next, we have the authorizing of the filing complaint against the valuation of real property for the tax year 2023. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Mr. Snyder, yeah, I contacted Mr. Snyder, see, Mr. Snyder, no, not Mr. Snyder, Mr. Snyder, regarding these agenda items, as I needed to understand what exactly these were for, so would you mind sharing?
Yes, yes, okay. You approved a policy permitting the filing of tax complaints against Class II or business-related properties. This happened when we did the last question policy update. Will a law change requiring now the Board of Education to publicly approve the filing of those complaints? We've been doing this for years. So in essence, private businesses will challenge the taxable value of their property, they'll base it on some kind of either opinion, some type of maybe unrelated or related sales transaction. We have an attorney who participates in that process to make sure that everybody is playing by the same rules of the game, and that everybody's paying their fair share. When valuable complaints are approved, let's say it's a decrease complaint by a taxpayer, they are refunded their taxes if they paid them, and then in theory, the tax rate is adjusted so that refund is spread among the remaining taxpayers the next tax year. So it's really important that we track this and we watch it so that everybody's paying their fair, pay their fair share of taxes, so they're not distributed unevenly. So if you're seeing three or two more actions after this first one identifying the actual properties, and then this is required of new legislation attaching. Sounds like a lot of more work, but it's our Fall Out General Assembly at work. Thank you.
So we have now a roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
I feel like we're right, we've been doing this three days to make, I've been doing it years, so this is not a new practice, it's a new requirement to continue the same practice.
The same practice. Uh, next is authorizing filing complaint against valuation of real property tax for the year 2023. Motion to approve.
So E.
E. I didn't mean.
I didn't mean.
E.
E.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Next is the authorizing and filing complaint against valuation of real property tax for 2023. I agree with that.
Thank you.
So move.
Second. It's not exactly... Um, roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
And next we have the minutes of the regular board meeting, January 24th, 2024, and the special board meeting of February 12th, 2024. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
And next, my favorite, newspaper. Motion to approve.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Janar.
Yes.
Miss Reed.
Yes.
Miss Tressa.
Yes.
Roll with it.
Good job.